Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting in the Elwood City Area School District, May 12th, 2014, to order roll call, Mr. Zerone.
Mr. Bazelli.
Here.
Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Newpower.
Here.
Mrs. Panzera.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Roy.
Here.
Mr. DeCaro.
Here.
Will we stand for a moment of silence while I pledge allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I trust that all the board members have read the minutes from our May 5th and May 8th meetings. We need approval, we need a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Stevenson, second. Mrs. Panzera, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes aye. Okay, we'll move right to our visitors. We'll skip over the superintendent's report and we'll move right to our visitors. We'll start right up front here. Would you like to state your name and the reason why you're here tonight, please?
My name is Janee McCarthy, and I'm here because I'm summer help with custodial as a sub. And I got a letter stating that I was accepted for summer work seven to three from June 4th to August 15th, and then was informed that I can only work 28 hours starting this week because of the Obamacare thing. And that goes until July 1st. So my question is, is it possible that I could work the 40-hour weeks until July 1st when it actually comes into effect?
I think that that's fair. As a matter of fact, I did ask Ms. Kristen Harcell to contact Steve to go ahead and try to get you scheduled that. But Obamacare is actually going to affect until July 1st, so I would see no reason why you can't do it.
So that's my line here?
You're good to go.
You can stay if you'd like.
One minute.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Bye, everybody. I haven't seen her on time.
Next.
I work for a lot of work.
Okay. Well, we'll go into our business part of the meeting. You're on the revenue finance, Mr. Newpower.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, I'm County Revenue Finance, number seven, General Fund Treasurers Report. In your folder is the General Fund Treasurers Report for the period of May 1 through May 31, 2014. The summary of accounts is as follows. ESB checking, $181,149. PLGIT, $10,322.81. PSDLF, $1,385.7. PA Invest, $378.54. ESB Bank Public Investment Account, $5,153,234.40. ESB Certificates of Deposit, $4,5,120.54. Total cash and investments at May 31, 2014, $9,351,590.36. I move the Treasurers Report for the month of May 2014 to be approved as presented.
I need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Grossman, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number eight, General Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder is the General Fund Accounts Payable Checks included are checks 106604 through 106734. 131 checks and nine wire transfers amounting to $1,404,149.3. I move that the General Fund Accounts Payable Checks be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Trowell, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number nine, Capital Reserve Fund Treasurers Report. In your folder is the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurers Report for May. The total investments at May 31, 2014 were $609,413.25, with $5,880.68 in the checking account for total funds available of $615,293.93. I move the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurers Report for May 2014 to be approved as presented.
Second. Second, Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 10, Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder is the Capital Reserve Accounts Payable Report. Included is check 1421, amounting to $28,231.65. I move that the Capital Reserve Fund Accounts Payable Check be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Charlie, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
I would also ask that the following reports be made part of the minutes of this evening's meeting. As of April 30, 2014, Cafeteria Report, Statement of Revenue vs. Budget, Statement of Expense vs. Budget, Tax Collection Report. As of May 31, 2014, Cafeteria Report, Statement of Revenue vs. Budget, Statement of Expense vs. Budget, Tax Collection Report, Investment Report, Investment Earnings Report, Athletic Facility Report, Helling Stadium Fund Report.
Could you say that they're made part of the minutes, Mr. Zerone?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Number 11, Approved Tax Collectors Exonerations. In your folder is the summary of exonerations requested by the elected tax collectors for the 2013 tax duplicate. Unpaid property taxes have been filed with the Lawrence County Tax Claim Bureau, and unpaid per capita taxes will be filed with Burkhammer Tax Administrators for collection. I move the exonerations be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Gardner, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 12, Authorized Investments. I move that the Board Secretary Business Manager be authorized to invest school district funds as permitted by the Pennsylvania School Code section as they become available during the 2014-2015 fiscal year, with Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, PLGIT, Pennsylvania Local School District Liquid Asset Fund, PSDLF, Pennsylvania Invest, PNC Bank, and ESB Bank, and further that any investments may be submitted to the Board for review at subsequent meetings.
Second. Second, Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 13, Approved Budgetary Transfers. I move that the Business Manager be authorized per Section 609 of the Pennsylvania School Code to make the necessary budgetary transfers in preparation of the closing of the 2013-2014 record.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 14, Approved 2014-2015 General Fund Budget. In your folder is a copy of the PDE-2028 General Fund Budget for the 2014-15 fiscal year in the amount of $26,988, I'm sorry, $26,988,166. I move the budget be approved as presented, incorporated into this evening's meeting minutes, and submitted per the school code to the Department of Education.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Panzera, any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment. Budget. Budget's gonna pass tonight without my vote, as I stated before. It's not a good budget. It's not even the best one we have. It's a matter of pure pragmatism. It'll take several more meetings. If we don't have a budget passed by the end of the month, the school district will close down. Those are all facts. I'm very disappointed that we came to this point. 2011, public education was an economic tsunami. But we here at Elwood, as all public education facilities, realize that financial support for public education, we've experienced in the past, all of a sudden contrasts very sharply with what we were gonna have over the next several years. That particular year, even though we were hit hard, we were prepared because we had a plan in place that had worked on for a long time and contraction in closing of a school. We worked on it earlier, we didn't have everything in place earlier, took other things such as continued drop enrollment, we took the new bussings on track, but we were ready. But at that point, that got us through to that year. And after that, we were able, through a couple of other windfalls, to get through another year. We talked about whether they were formally or informally, other things for the future. After talking about this for a past month, a number of items have all of a sudden surfaced where there could possibly be savings, but we talked about this and asked about it. To have a plan in place since 2011, myself, I was involved in contract negotiations where statements that I just made were presented to the other side explaining why we're being very conservative with committing to the school district and spending any monies in the future we know we don't have or we can't hope to get. And it was part of a long-term, comprehensive plan to put this school district on a firm financial basis to stay in operation. This budget does not do that. The idea of, all the ideas that we heard, some board members may have heard it for the first time, they were floated around before, were to be prepared like we were in 2011 when the day comes. The day came, and we weren't prepared. We're passing a budget that has two items, taking money from the fund balance, a non-renewable resource, it took so long to build up. I could support that if we did that instead of raising taxes. Raising taxes instead of taking money from, we're doing both, but there's not a plan in place because next year, it'll be the same thing. The year after, it'll be the same thing. This is where we're at right now. This is not a plan. It is more than unwise, it's reckless to think that every year, we're gonna take from our fund balance and raise taxes to the maximum index. That's a, it's not gonna, how long are we gonna be here? It's not, I said, it's more than unwise, it's a reckless financial plan. We should've been ready, we have many other items. And then, as we begin to talk about them, and I hear the list of why we can't do those items. 2011, we had several meetings with the community, over 200 people telling us, "You can't do this, you can't do this." When it finally came down to where we explained everything, one of the final obstacles, you can't put fifth graders on a bus with high school students. That's just, you can't do it. We've been doing it now for three years. The cuts that we did make, every one of them has a negative effect on education. It would be great if we just come in and do everything we wanted to do. We don't have unlimited funds. This is where public education in America is right now. Tough decisions have to be made. This board made tough decisions before. We didn't have the options available we have right now. There is a vast gulf between what would've been satisfactory and acceptable, the actual performance of the administration preparing us for this budget. Timing may be bad, questions and things that should be said, everything that should've been said maybe a long time ago. Perhaps if the administration would've put as much time, effort, and energies and seriousness into this budget, and had been worried about who was playing basketball where or what, maybe we wouldn't be here. Maybe we would. I find it so ironic that the superintendent is gonna throw himself on his sword for administration to spend months throwing him under the bus. Those are all questions that have to be answered. I had to, it had to be said, somebody had to say, "That happened." The other thing about this, somehow this was brought out, like this was a contest. There were winners. There were actually people picking out banners and having a parade. There were no winners, only losers. This whole situation that everybody was dragged into, number one, was unnecessary. Number two, is a terrible stain on this school district, and it's a stench to the nostrils of this community. There are no innocent parties. Members of the athletic department, instead of intervening, getting parties together, trying to get things worked out, fueled the fires of discontent. And we come down to here, and we don't have options other than to raise taxes. Mr. President, I will not be voting for this budget. Thank you.
I would like to add, three or four months ago, when I both came in here and offered to sit down and talk more about this budget, and try and find the direction and the purpose that you're talking about, and we didn't have very welcome and open arms here at this table. So, I agree with somewhat of what you said, but I still think that we can't throw it on the administration. It's not their fault, we're here too. It's our fault as well. And that we wanted to go along with that, so that's my two cents. Thank you.
My two cents. I don't think we did enough. I think we could've looked at our cuts. We have one person taking the blame for a lot of things, and that shouldn't be that way. My vote is a no.
Well, we'll have a roll call if you want a roll call.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You referred to the budget, I'm sorry. You don't.
Mr. Zerone, can we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bazelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
No.
Mr. Gardner.
No.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morales.
Yes.
Mr. Newpower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Trowell.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Majority. We need to do that.
I would like to ask a question, though. If I recall, the budget can be reopened and things change, correct?
I believe that if the state does not pass their budget by June 30th, they get the opportunity to reopen.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a great chance that may happen.
I know. That's why I'm asking, because we can do a lot of other things.
The only comment I'll make is, yeah, I agree probably there are some things we can do, but we have to keep in mind that what we're doing is interfering in people's lives when we start this wholesale cutting for no other purpose than cut. So let's keep that in mind before we start moderation.
Good point, Mr. Stevenson.
I think that's what led us to where we're at now, why the additional cuts weren't made. Was because we were trying to keep the kids' best interest with the effect that we had.
Their best interest, plus the staff that's been around here for years. We just suddenly, wah, and they're out the door.
But our hands are tied.
This year, I would like that to be done, but I still, let's make sure when we make any cuts, that we do it in the best possible, good way, and the best possible outcome.
Well, I mean, I just, my sense is, I think it's inevitable that with the budget getting worse over the years, I mean, we have to think of, we might, we need to start now thinking of closing Perry. I don't think we have an option not to.
Well, that was our, if you weren't here Monday.
Right.
We had a feas, they're gonna do a feasibility.
Okay. Thank you.
My comments were directed at making moves to get savings as opposed to just tracking the cuts.
Well, the only way to get savings is cuts.
Is payroll. That's where the money is, is in payroll. That is, that's a fact, that's nothing that we can play with. Unfortunately, that's where we sit.
If you look at every area, we cut in every area over the past couple of years, Lee Roy, and you know that.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying, we need to make modifications while we're going.
We've cut in the sports program, we no longer have soccer teams.
Contraction is one. Moving career technical students is possibly a half million dollar savings.
Well, yeah.
That's not, there's no cuts there. That's just moves, that's what I'm talking.
There again, my question was, how long are you gonna be on buses? And your answer was, well, Bieber does it, yeah. When they're only going from Anacko over to Bieber, that's not very long. When they're going from Center Township.
Going from township to Center Township. Going from Brookside, which is three miles from here, to Center Township. What I'm saying is, their 16th schools have been doing it for 50 years.
Yeah.
Well, we know there are other costs associated with having more teachers, which is exactly what we're trying to get away from, is payroll. You add that payroll back in.
Those are only two items, and many other modifications, curriculum can be changed, and we can get saved. I'm just saying that we can't predict where we're at.
Let me say this, with my summary and your 1,000 teacher retirement, that's gonna be way over $200,000. You take that from $595,000 deficit, you're below $400,000. Our fund balance is still gonna be over $5 million. And the feasibility study, it'll be presented, there'll be cuts there. So really, I think things aren't as bad as they look. We have to follow through and make sure that we do the feasibility study and be accurate on our figures, the savings, and benefit academically to students. And I really think that a plan is advised.
Well, I hope we come up with something that.
There'll be good suggestions.
Without the budget, no.
Yeah.
Okay. Number 15, Capital Reserve Fund Budget. In your folder is a copy of the Capital Reserve Fund Budget for 2014-2015 fiscal year in the amount of $611,849. I move the Capital Reserve Fund Budget be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 16, Approved Tax Duplicate. In your folder is a summary of the 2014 tax duplicate as confirmed by the County Assessor's Office. I move that the 2014 property and per capita duplicates in the amount of $8,034,35 and $38,095 be approved as presented and charged to the local tax collectors as indicated. I further move that the discount period for the 2014 property and per capita tax duplicate be July 1, 2014 through August 31, 2014. The phase period to begin September 1 and end on October 31, 2014. And the penalty phase to begin on November 1, 2014 and end on December 31, 2014. After December 15, 2014, only cash and guaranteed money orders and cashier's checks are to be accepted by tax collectors. After December 31, 2014, property taxes will be filed at the Lawrence County Courthouse, and per capita taxes will be filed with Burkhammer Tax Administrators.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Trowell, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 17, Approved Tax Resolutions. In your folder is a copy of the tax resolution setting the tax rates for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. I move that the resolution be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 18, Homestead-Farmstead Exclusion Resolution. In your folder is the 2014-15 Homestead-Farmstead calculation and resolution implementing the Homestead-Farmstead exclusion for the 2014-15 tax year. I move the calculation and resolution be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 19, Fund Balance Resolution. Act 48 of 2003 imposes limitations on unreserved fund balance. In your folder is a resolution categorizing the district's unreserved fund balance to meet the requirements of Act 48 and GASB 54. I move the resolution be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 20, Improved Insurance Program. In your folder is a tabulation of pricing received for the 2014-15 insurance package. I move that the following insurance contracts as administered through the Arthur J. Gallagher and Company Insurance Agency of Johnstown, PA be awarded. The package, which includes property, general liability, and violent event response coverage underwritten by Liberty Mutual Insurance Company at a premium of $54,822. Workers' compensation coverage underwritten by Highmark Insurance Company at a premium of $106,356. School leaders' errors and omissions insurance provided by Liberty Mutual Insurance Company at a premium of $3,360. Umbrella coverage provided by Liberty Mutual Insurance Company at a premium of $7,216.
Second.
Second, another question.
Mr. Stevenson, go ahead.
What is violent event response coverage?
I thought you might ask that. That is a situation like, to handle a situation like what happened in Franklin region. So if a building were not usable anymore because of the trauma that occurred, there would be money and funds to help the district solve that problem. It's not necessarily property damage, but it's related.
Wouldn't that be covered under our umbrella coverage?
It would be on top of it.
On top of?
Or the umbrella would be on top of that.
The umbrellas, the umbrellas on top of the.
Just looks like they created a whole new insurance category to take in charge of more for now. But we still have the old one, but.
But I think it would not have been something that would've been covered in the past years. Just with the incidence of things that are going on, they've under.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 21, Medical Insurance Premiums. In your folder is a summary of the Allegheny County School Health Insurance Consortium medical insurance rates for the 2014-2015 school year that reflect an increase of 5.75%. I move the rates be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion?
Yes, question.
Mr. Stevenson.
They're already negotiating, so maybe you know the answer. Will this be passed on to teachers?
What the modifications in the plan is, the consortium will make modifications to keep this premium from increasing.
Yeah, for grades. But now, the 5.75 increase, did it come back to us, or back to the teachers?
Yeah, that's our premium increase, yeah. But in order to keep these in the past, the insurance we were paying for in the past had outrageous increases in premiums every year, mainly based on history and usage.
Okay.
The Allegheny Consortium plan is, with their 24-member board, they aggressively are proactive to do a lot of preventative things and try and prevent premiums, and they make internal modifications that the employees will pick up. There'll be modifications that'll be out-of-pocket expenses.
Oh, is it more of a coverage then?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I see what you mean.
And that keeps the premium from going up in the past. It'll go up.
Correct. As an example, this year, a plan modification they made was they added a $100 deductible to the HMO plan. There'd never been that $100 deductible. So while we pick up the 5.75 in premium, the employees will pick up 100 on the deductible when they're in the HMO plan, or maybe a $20 to $30 copay increase, that's how the costs are.
Okay, so the difference is, premium's premium, and this is what the coverage is.
Yeah, plan modifications.
In the past, our premiums would go up, and the plan would stay the same for employees.
We'd have to negotiate.
By contract.
Now we don't have to negotiate the copays or deductions.
That was the real benefit of going that direction is.
I see that now. I agree with it.
Can I answer your question?
Any other questions? Okay, the motion passes. Go ahead, Mr. Newpower.
Thank you, Mr. Bazelli. Number 22, Life Insurance Rates. In your folder is a proposal submitted by Associated Life Underwriters of Needville, PA to provide life insurance and accidental death and dismemberment coverage for the period of July 1, 2014 through June 30, 2017, at .147 for life and .02 per thousand for accidental death and dismemberment for active employees, and .71 and .02 for retirees. I move the rates be accepted and the Business Manager be offered. I move the rates be accepted and the business manager be authorized to issue a letter of acceptance.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number twenty-three, agreement for participation in child nutrition program. In your folder is an agreement for participation in child nutrition programs between the school district and the Midwestern Intermediate Unit Board for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number twenty-four, dental insurance rates. In your folder is a summary of the Delta Dental Premium Rates and Administrative Fees for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year that reflect a rate hold. I move the rates and fee be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number twenty-five, long-term disability insurance rates. In your folder is a summary of the long-term disability coverage at a monthly premium rate of eight dollars twenty-five cents for insurance provided to the support staff through the Pennsylvania School Board's Association Insurance Trust. I move that the rate be approved as presented.
Second, Mrs. Panzera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number twenty-six, athletic insurance. In your folder is a proposal submitted by Bolinger Incorporated for student accident and athletic insurance for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year at a rate of thirty dollars for voluntary K through twelve school time insurance, a hundred and thirteen dollars for voluntary twenty-four hour insurance, and nine thousand eight hundred six dollars for athletic coverage. I move the coverage be placed with Monumental Life Insurance Company through Bolinger Incorporated at the rates indicated.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Morella, questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number twenty-seven, P D E, contract to sell meals from schools. In your folder is a contract to sell or purchase meals from schools between the district and Lawrence County Social Services for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number twenty-eight, school district auditor. Section twenty-four oh one of the school code of Pennsylvania requires the finances of every school district be properly audited. Philip Weiner Company of Newcastle, PA has served the district as the district auditor for many years, it's near the town. In a highly satisfactory manner, I move that Philip Weiner Company be appointed to audit the records of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen fiscal year.
I need a second on that.
Second.
Mrs. Panzera, any questions?
Comment.
Go ahead, Mr. Stevenson.
Uh, well, I'm sure it's audited, I had a friend who was a C P A.
Look it over.
I said, you know what, does this, does this look like you're put out? And when it was done, he said, I'm not sure my firm could have done a good, a good job.
Well, they always have a good job for us.
Is that a...
Yeah, vote for Phil.
Any other questions or comments? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
That's it from Revenue Finance, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Newspower. Personnel education, Mr. Garda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Number twenty-nine, P C A instructional aid. For the provisions of Article Six, Sector Four, the Department of Labor Agreement with the S E I U, I move that the work week of Michael Boston Lincoln High School P C A instructional aid be modified for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year to include four days from seven fifteen A M. to two thirty P M. And one day from seven fifteen A M. to one fifteen P M.
Second. Mr. Bezelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number thirty, job description change, special ed. clerk. The administration recommending that the job description for the special ed. clerk position be modified to include a twelve-month work schedule. In your folder is a modified job description. I move it be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number thirty-one, student teacher. I move that Ms. Besta Lynn Bates from Robert Morris University be authorized to complete her future teaching assignment under the supervision of Mrs. Best Scher, Mrs. Alicia Ledbeater, and Mr. Mrs. Kristen Gagrich for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Second. Mr. Newspower, any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead, Mrs. Panzera.
Does Robert Morris reimburse us for the, the, the teacher gets paid who's monitoring his new teacher, right?
I think there's a stipend of two hundred dollars.
And that comes from Rob- Robert Morris, not from us?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number thirty-two, Kelly Services Proposal. In your folder is a proposal from Kelly Services to provide substitute teacher services in the district for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. I move that the proposal, which includes a daily rate of seventy-five dollars, be accepted as presented and the administration be authorized to execute a contract document that forms final approval by the solicitor.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Um, have they, have they gotten in touch with all of our subs so far? Like, all, all that we have now, so that they can...
Until they actually were approved, we couldn't do anything. Now that it's approved, I'll be in contact with them tomorrow. I'm gonna have to work with Solicitor Decare to get all the terms of the contract line, which exactly as he likes it. Then there'll be a transition program where we'll invite the subs in, I'm not sure all of them at one time, over a period during the summertime, to get all the paperwork filled out and get them signed up and ready to go.
Thank you.
Number thirty-three, head teachers. The following staff members are recommended as head teachers for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. Anne Parsons, Northside Primary School. Current Customelli Perry Lower Intermediate School. David Longo, Hartman Intermediate. I move the recommendation be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Newspower, questions?
Roll call, go.
Roll call, Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. Newspower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
No. I don't believe we need a head teacher at Northside High School. Mrs. Gibson is their principal. I understand the reasons we have, if we're Hartman and Perry, Mr. Gailey could be between the two. Of course, now you could say, it has been said to me that Mrs. Gibson could be over there linking for a meeting or something. Yes, but she'd be reached by telephone and she could be there within five minutes. Or ten minutes. I don't believe we need a head teacher at Northside, I'm sorry.
What if she's sick or out of the district? If she's sick or out of the district, someone has to be responsible for it.
Well, I'm sure I'm usually sick or out of the district for a day. Mr. Rangini could fill in, or one of the other head teachers to be responsible.
Well, the head teachers have classes too, they teach, uh, they have classes.
I just don't feel we need one over there.
What are the salaries? Do they get paid a little more?
They get paid, I don't recall whether it's a hundred dollar number or eight hundred dollar number. It's between six and eight.
For the year?
Yes.
I think it's, it's in the contract too.
Right, it is.
Mr. Bezelli.
Yes. Motion passes.
Number thirty-four, Academy sponsors. I move that Justin Knoller be appointed as the assistant marching band director for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions?
Question.
Mrs. Panzera.
We have all his clearances?
Pretty sure we do, because I think he helped out before.
Can that be checked on?
Yeah, we can check on it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Roll call, both please.
Roll call, Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. Newspower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mr. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Bezelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number thirty-five, department chairpersons. In your folder is a list of secondary department chairpersons recommended by Mr. Wayne for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. I move the list be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Panzera, any questions?
Roll call, both please.
Roll call, Mr. Jerome.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
No?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
We're a lot of...
Quiet today.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. Newspower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mr. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Abstain.
Mr. Bezelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
My attention is because of my daughters having my...
How much do they get paid?
They get one, what is it, one unit?
No, that's, that's seven hundred.
It's about the same amount.
The motion passes.
Number thirty-six, remedial secondary summer school. I move that Mr. Rafterall be approved to teach remedial algebra and Ms. Kate Frampton be approved to teach remedial biology during the two thousand fourteen summer school program.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Grossman, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Number thirty-seven, tenure. Professional staff that have completed six successful semesters are eligible for tenure. Heather McQuiston, Lincoln High Math teacher, and Anne Fensel, Northside kindergarten and elementary grounds. Therefore, I move that tenure be granted.
Second. Mr. Bezelli, any questions?
I don't even notice that the state of California judges your tenure guilty.
Is it true?
Yeah.
No? Thank you.
And, uh, to the lightness.
Any other questions? The motion passes.
Number thirty-eight, faculty manager. I move that Darren Morella be appointed as faculty manager for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year at a salary of three thousand four hundred dollars and seventy-eight cents.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, both. Mrs. Grossman, second in motion, and we need a roll call, Mr. Jerome.
Now, Mr. Morella.
Abstain. Do the relation, sorry.
Mr. Newspower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mr. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Oh, yes.
Mr. Bezelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number thirty-nine, extended season pay. In your folder is a list of extended season pay for softball, track, and field coaches for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen season. I move the play, the pay be approved as presented.
Second.
Second. I have a roll call, both please.
Second by Mr. Cortez, we need a roll call, both, Mr. Jerome.
Mr. Newspower.
Yes.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mr. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Bezelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes. Motion passes.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Garda. Properties and Transportation, Mrs. Panzera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Facility request. Anthony Ovial, head basketball coach, requesting the use of Lincoln High School boys gym, concession stand, locker rooms, for an elementary Wolverines basketball camp from June sixteenth, two thousand, June sixteenth through June twentieth, two thousand fourteen, for all students in the Elwood City Area School District for ages three to six. The camp will be managed by Coach Ovial, his coaching staff and players. He requests the gym from seven thirty A M. to twelve thirty P M. B, the First United Methodist Church requests permission to use the Lincoln High School small gym from on Wednesday, June twenty-fifth, two thousand fourteen, from five to eight P M. They will hold a basketball and character building program as part of their annual vacation Bible school program. Mr. Al Campan will supervise their program. C, Holy Redeemer Parish requests permission to use Lincoln High School parking lot for overflow parking during the annual parish bazaar. They request Wednesday, July thirtieth, to Saturday, August second, two thousand fourteen. D, Tom DeTao, track coach, is requesting the use of the Hellings Stadium track, track only, to conduct the track and field clinic to better local athletes and raise money for A L S. He is requesting one hour a day on June eighth, ninth, tenth, and July twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen. E, Elwood City Volunteer Fire Department is requesting the use of the Ewing Park School property to park cars during the Elwood City Arts and Food Festival. F, Elwood City Breakfast Finalization Committee has requested use of the Saville Auditorium only in the event of inclement weather to host its outdoor summer concert series on the following dates, June fourteenth, twenty-first, twenty-eighth, and July twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth, August second, sixth, sixteenth, and thirty, I, thirtieth. I move that the request be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Petrelli, any questions?
Question.
Mr. Stevenson.
Uh, under D, I, Tom DeTao requesting use of Hellings Stadium track, is that June eighth, ninth, and tenth? I think, or July eighth, ninth?
They didn't have the dates, well, I'm assuming it's July fourth, fifth, and sixth. No, it says July eighth, ninth, tenth, and then July twenty-two, three, and four.
But you said June, right, you know, is it July?
No, that was, I don't have any dates online for E. E says Elwood City Volunteer Fire Department.
No, D.
Oh, D, I'm sorry. No, you said E. He's requesting one hour a day on July, yes, sir. I apologize.
Well, I, I didn't know, it could have been June.
Yes, I apologize.
No, I need a second on that. Mrs. Petrelli, second, we have any questions other than Mr. Stevenson's? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Elwood City Transit Van Driver Monitor. In your folder is a list of Elwood City Transit Van Drivers Monitors for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. I move the list be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Porterville Christian School Bus Contract. In your folder is a copy of the Porterville Christian School Bus Contract for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year that reflects a daily rate of one hundred seventy-five dollars, which is no increase over the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. I move that the contract be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fit Tabulation. In your folder is a tabulation of the general, art, custodial, athletic, and athletic medical supply bids purchased through the intermediate unit and district purchasing program. I move that the tabulation be approved and the bids be awarded as presented.
Second. Mr. Newspower, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Administrative Studies. I move the administration be directed to conduct studies and report to the board on the possibility of closing a Perry Intermediate School, reducing the number of credits required to graduate, modifying the Christian, the kindergarten program from full to half-time, and the possibility of transitioning from the Lawrence County Career and Technical Center to the Beaver County Career and Technical Center.
Second. Mr. Garda, any questions?
I think we should have a roll call, both.
Okay, Mr. Cortez, roll call, Mr. Jerome.
Mrs. Panzera.
Yes.
Mrs. Petrelli. Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Bazelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Got to wax some teeth or something.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. Newpower.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Intern health care contract. In your folder is an agreement with the intern health care to provide skilled nursing services on van runs according to the requirements of various individual education plans during two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year at a rate of forty-two dollars an hour.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Cortez, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Replacement phone system. I move the administration be authorized to proceed with the purchase of a new telephone system and lease agreement to finance it and submit the final pricing and documentation for approval at the August board meeting.
Second.
Second.
Second, Mrs. Grossman, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Field quality change. In your folder is a field quantity, quality change, quantity change, acknowledgement for the repair of the existing coping head joint pointing and repairs at no additional cost to the district. I move that the, the acknowledgement be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Newpower, questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Fancera. Student Affairs and Athletics, Mr. Cortez.
Forty-eight, Act eighty, early dismissal dates. In your folder is a list of Act eighty, early dismissal dates for the two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year. I move the list and dates be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion?
We have a roll call on this one also, but.
Yes, sir. Mr. Zerun, roll call, please.
Mrs. Petrelli.
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mr. Bazelli.
Yes.
Mr. Cortez.
Yes.
Mr. Garda.
Yes.
Mrs. Grossman.
Yes.
Mr. Morella.
Yes.
Mr. Newpower.
Yes.
Mrs. Fancera.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Forty-nine, athletic trainer agreement. In your folder is a copy of the two thousand fourteen fifteenth athletic trainer agreement with dark physical therapy that reflects no change from two thousand thirteen fourteen, and move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Fancera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Fifty, ambulance agreement. In your folder is a copy of the two thousand fourteen fifteenth ambulance agreement with Medical Transport Incorporated med back ambulance. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Fancera.
Question.
Question, Mr. Stevenson.
They charge us how much for a junior high game?
One hundred and sixteen dollars.
For a JV game?
One hundred and sixteen fifty.
And how much for varsity?
One forty-two.
What's the difference?
The equipment and the personality of the games.
You don't bring as good of equipment to the junior high game, right?
Probably very sad, I don't want to say not as good, but they don't have as much, as, as much of a staff. I mean, I, I guess the theory is that there's less risk for the younger kids because they're smaller and they don't get as hard.
What I've noticed is they bring a basic life support ambulance to the junior high games. Being an advanced life support, pregnant, to the varsity. Cannot, the little children need that advanced life support. Because their staff with EMTs and the advanced life supports, that are paramedics.
At the board's direction, we'll have advanced life support at junior high and JV meetings.
I just think. It's not that big a deal, but it just seems like if something could happen to a child that requires an advanced life support in a football, yes, that can happen. Then we ought to have that for it. There's not that much difference.
Well, just a good thing it's at the hospital right up the road, too.
Well, that helps, too, but there again, like you say, the hospital being right up the road, then all we need is basic support, yes, because they can get them right to the hospital. I don't know, that's why I don't look to rest of the sports for the.
Roll call the boards.
I don't understand why it's two. You'd think it'd be one or the other.
Mr. Mr. Zerun will do a roll call on this, uh, motion, please.
Okay.
Whether to, uh, leave it the way it is or have, uh.
One last thing before you do your roll call, though. If I was a parent and my kid got hurt to the point where he was crippled or even worse, even passed away, because we didn't have advanced equipment there that we should have had there, we only had basic equipment there.
So may I ask, Mr. Carroll, are we required to have any such one versus the other at these games?
Not that I'm aware of, I can look into it. You know, my suggestion might be to ask the, uh, medical team in this company from a medical perspective, would they recommend, you know, what's the difference?
So we're not required to have one versus the other?
We have, no, we have to have some, we have to have something. Sure if they felt that they need.
They would probably call.
Yeah.
Back up.
What kind of crowds are the JV games ever been?
Very usually.
They football. It's much smaller than what the, the games are.
Saturday mornings.
No, Mr. Way, I don't know if the W P I L, I don't know if they require something, I wouldn't worry.
I'd have to look.
I mean, I think part of it may be the crowd, not, they're there for the crowd.
Right.
Not just the.
Yeah, but that argument, if they're there in case somebody in the crowd has a problem, that's good, because they're there for that, the advanced life support. But they're going to build those people some circuits, so it's not a matter of they have to be paid more.
I, I, I guess I was looking at, they, I believe they may look at the, uh, potential for certain type of event is greater with the larger crowds, so they have more.
Mr. Zerun.
Yes, sir.
What kind of problems would be posed if we gathered more information and put this off to the August meeting?
Uh, would create a problem for me, um, at all? What's the difference between the two? The money was, a hundred and forty-two versus a hundred and sixteen, twenty-two, twenty-three dollars. And how many games do we have at junior high? Three or four home games. And then three or four JVs, you're talking two hundred and fifty bucks.
Are there only ambulances at a football game?
Yes, I can be honest, I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, the, the only athletic contest we have an ambulance is at a football game.
So no baseball or?
We have a trainer there, basketball and baseball.
There's like one power club as well, and that's it.
Correct. That's a good source.
No contact game, yeah.
So you asking for a motion to table it, Mr. Cortez, do our, we get more information on it?
We haven't got.
It may be, we may ask for it at full service and they may not be able to provide it. I don't know. The reason I'm saying is for varsity football games, talking about five home dates, when you add those other ones, it's, those are weekdays, I'd say, I don't know, I'm just speculating.
I would think it's not.
Say, if it doesn't matter, we get, get more information and find out. Rather than make a decision either way today when we don't have all the information we want.
Second motion, then.
The table, okay, we'll, uh, table it, uh, pending, uh, part of the, uh, investigation information on the, uh, prov- the provisions that they give us. Okay, go ahead.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one. Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit Special Ed Agreement. In your folder is an agreement between the Beaver Valley Intermediate Unit and the district for special education services to be provided during the two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year at an estimate cost of a hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred dollars. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Fancera, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-two, secondary book adoption. The administration has recommended following textbook considered for adoption at the August meeting. Biology, Glencoe Science, published by McGraw-Hill for Biology, too. I move the book acknowledged, placed on display, submitted for final adoption at the August two thousand fourteen meeting.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-three, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, P A, pre-K account school district collaboration agreement. In your folder is the P A pre-K count school district collaboration agreement for the two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-four, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, summer kindergarten readiness program agreement. In your folder is the summer kindergarten readiness program agreement for the two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year between the district and the Lawrence County Community Action Partnership. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Newpower, questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-five, tuition student, Laurel Agricultural Education Program. I move that Casey Baker, daughter of Bruce and Cynthia Baker, one forty-one, Shingle Hollow Road Harmony, be authorized to enroll in the Laurel School District, participate in its high school agricultural education program for the two thousand fourteen fifteenth school year with tuition costs paid by the Elwood City Area School District.
Second. Mr. Garda, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-six, elementary secondary student handbook. In your folder are changes to the elementary and secondary student handbook as recommended by the administration. I move the change to be approved as presented.
Second. Mr. Stevenson, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-seven, student teacher agreement. In your folder is an affiliation agreement between the district, Robert Morris University, outlines the duties and responsibilities of each entity in implementing the R M U internship, practice, pre-clinic, and student teaching program. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-eight, service agreement, Lawrence County Drug and Alcohol Commission Incorporated, S C A. In your folder is the agreement that calls for the district and the S C A to cooperate, providing provision of drug and alcohol prevention referral services at a cost of two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Newpower, questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Fifty-nine, revised policy for review. The administration has recommended a policy number two seventeen, graduation requirement be revised. I move the policy to be acknowledged and incorporated into the minutes of the evening meetings, placed on the agenda of subsequent meetings for board consideration.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Petrelli, any questions? Any objections to the motion? The motion passes.
Sixty, energy and advanced manufacturing day. In your folder is a letter of district commitment for participation in the Beaver County I U Energy and Advanced Manufacturing Day program. I move the letter be approved as presented.
Second. Mrs. Fancera, any questions?
Yes, question.
Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Zerun.
Sir, look.
That's, uh, through the re- uh, Beaver County Initiative, uh, Mr. Sobich has been involved with that. And what they're going to do is, uh, have a manufacturing day, uh, for students. And we could, I think, they'll, they'll provide transportation for us, for up to twenty-four, forty-eight students, I think.
It's in the springtime.
Will they go where, they go somewhere?
Whatever they set up.
Yeah.
They, they need a letter from thirteen schools in Beaver County, tickets to, forward it ahead and start planning it, it's not until next spring. So they're looking for commitments that we would be involved. So right now, I think we're about the fifth or sixth school.
And this will be educational, is it?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's your question.
Part of Beaver County Regional Choice?
Yeah.
School's been involved with, uh, sharing other classes, and, uh, Mr. Ward is one of the founders?
Yeah, that's through cooperation with Riverside. I had a pretty good relationship with, uh, Dave Perry, the former superintendent there. And since, uh, our boundaries are pretty close, we're adjacent to one another, he asked if we would, wouldn't mind going in because of the sharing of, uh, uh, classes, only two to three miles away, it'd be beneficial. And we were able to get into this.
Sixty-one.
Thank you.
Did you go? Sorry. Was that my answer, sorry?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Sorry, I missed it. Where's my motion? Sixty-one, athletic expense report. In your folder is the athletic fund transfer report. For May two thousand fourteen reflects total expenses of eight thousand three hundred four dollars and twelve cents. I move the athletic expense report be approved as presented.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Newpower, questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President, under Student Affairs and Athletics.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez, recognition and communications, Mr. Stevenson.
Yes, I have a couple here. First one is from Kurt Clay, our principal, is congratulations to head varsity track coaches, Al Cammon and Tom Nuttall, as well as Keaton Dosio. I pronounced that wrong.
Dosio.
Dosio. Jared Myers, Nick Iomelli, Paul Lutz, and Andy Hosen.
Hosen, yeah.
For placing at the W P I L track finals and qualifying for the P I A A State Track Meet that was held at Chippensburg University back on May twenty-second and twenty-third. Keaton, uh, participated in the hundred and ten meter high hurdles, as well as the four by one hundred relay at Chippensburg. Jared participated in the long jump in the four by one hundred meter relay. Paul and Nick were the other two members of the relay team. Andy threw the discus at Chippensburg. Well, this was the fourth consecutive year for Keaton to qualify for the state track meet. So congratulations to all the coaches and the athletes. And I also have a, another one, congratulation, congratulations, all right. Congratulations to head varsity sophomore, softball coach, Terry Rosansky, as well as the girls on the first fifteen for qualifying for the W P I L class triple-A playoffs. They played Central Valley on May thirteenth at North Allegheny. Congratulations to all the coaches and the players, and that was another, as I said, by Kurt Clay, the principal. Now, I have another one from Frank Kitty, the principal of Hartman Intermediate, Perry Lower Elementary, or Perry Lower Intermediate. Congratulations to the following fifth grade students at Hartman for their efforts in the Elwood City Lions Club essay writing contest. First, Molly McCollins took first place overall, and for that she'll receive a hundred dollar prize. Then Ireland Ricker was a runner-up, and Simone Gutierrez is also a runner-up. They'll each get a twenty-five dollar prize. The essays were responses to the novel Follow My Leader. They were directed by the fifth grade teachers, especially Mr. Mike Supin, Mrs. Tara Lombardo, Mrs. Gina Wise, and Mrs. Anna Vannion. Two, congratulations to all members of the Hartman Intermediate Band and the Hartman Mini Capers. Under the direction of Ms. Julia Menvansky and Mr. D Lee Caldwell, the annual spring band concert was a grand success. The student's hard work and diligence was apparent, and the director's passion shone through for all to see. And also thanks to Elwood City Pizza Joe's. Uh, continuing in the annual tradition, they donated a T-shirt and a personal pizza. Uh, continuing in the annual tradition, they donated a T-shirt and a personal pizza to every sixth grade student. These items were delivered on May twenty-eighth, and were met with huge smiles from all the students, as I imagine they would be, and that was submitted by Frank Kitty.
That's it?
No, it's not quite it, I have to say. When I came on board several years ago, I, I did very little. A lot of people weren't hired to teach me, and I learned a lot, I learned a lot, did my homework, and asked questions, as you can see, uh, the one guy that I always got, the answer to a question when I asked it was Frank Colloy. I, when he was hired many years ago, I thought to myself about knowing him, is he really qualified to do this? He's a driver's training teacher. Yeah, I actually thought that. And after seven years serving on this board with him as superintendent, the answer to that question was, I'm being yes. I'm sorry he's doing what he's doing, I wished he would stay, but he has to make that decision on ours.
Thank you, I came in quietly, and I'd like to leave quietly.
Okay. No, it wasn't quiet. I thought you were, you were a driver's training teacher, you couldn't do this, but you have done, and thank you for the honor of serving with you, except for...
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Stevenson?
Nope, that'll do it.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to new business. Uh, somebody like to read sixty-two?
Yes, I dropped graphics, it's our one, get there. Uh, July meeting, I move a July committee of regular meetings be canceled. Second?
Second. Mr. Stevenson, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Out of what we've just been told, are we going to need to have a meeting?
I think we should have another executive session, and then, and then we need to discuss that.
We'll schedule it. According to the job description of, uh, Mr. Mancini's, in my absence, he, he would serve as the superintendent.
If I could, uh, make another suggestion, we could just come back into the regular meeting after the executive, and then just hold off on this.
Okay.
Depending what we discuss.
So table in that?
Somebody just go into person, or executive right now, and then come back and finish the, okay, we'll do that. Uh, we're going to go into executive session here, yes, please, uh, yeah, use your session.
We call it, we, it's not sure if we have, yeah, it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm, it's you.
Oh, I'll, then you should know, because it's your idea, yeah.
Uh, Leslie and Chris, no, you don't need to wait, uh, Leslie and Chris.